I'd like to call the Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting in order. Ms. Barada, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted inside the door when you came into the event center. We have a couple of presentations tonight. First one is a special one, an oath of office for two new firefighters, chief those. Join me, please. If you cheer a little bit, then we'll do the swearing in and make them pin on.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, very pleased to be with you this evening. It's always an exciting time when we get to swear new members into the fire department. We have two new firefighters with us tonight. Through a really strange twist of circumstances, we are actually starting three, but one of them is deployed to the Middle East right now. The timing of the hiring and his deployment just conflicted well enough that we we got him started on the paperwork yesterday. HR will finish up with that when he gets back in the country and then we'll put him through our training at that time. But officially, he's he's a firefighter as well. So it's just a very unique set of circumstances. But we're very happy to have two new firefighters with us here tonight. Jack, come on up. Jack Zukitis is a native of Omaha. He attended Dome University where he got his degree in economics. I don't know exactly what that means, but he's not in the banking industry and he's firefighting, so we're happy for that. Uh, once he decided he wanted to become a firefighter, he went to Southeast Community College, got his associate's degree in fire protection technology and also paramedicine. Uh, he has most recently just been released from the Army, active duty. Uh, kind of a quick flow from active duty Army right to this, wasn't it?
Very.
Yeah, so the timing for Jack worked out very, very well. Very pleased to have him. Christian, come on up. Christian McKenzie is from Omaha, graduated Elkhorn High. He has an associate's from Southeast Community College as well. Uh, Christian has been a Fremont firefighter for the last three years, the last three years, so we stole him away from Fremont. Uh, their chief and I have talked a little bit and and we're the winners in that particular battle. Uh, he also volunteers with the Waterloo Volunteer Fire Department, so we love it when when our firefighters serve in their small communities as well. Jack, I will put a little pressure on you and have you introduce your friends and family members that are here.
Come up to the mic. Today with me are my parents, Patty and John, and my girlfriend, Julia. Thanks, guys.
Tonight I have with me my wife, Malia, and our son, Colter. And then my mom and dad, Julie and John McKenzie, and my father-in-law, Mitch, and oh, and my mother-in-law, Landon. I didn't see where she went.
Wait, we encourage the family members to get up and move around and take pictures as they as they could, so I I looked over there and saw, I thought, where did she go? And there she is. Okay, so Mayor, thank you.
We'll do the official oath, and it's long for those that haven't heard it. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Christian McKenzie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am a member of.
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
And then whichever members are going to come up in the badge, come up now. Mayor, members of the council, thank you.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. Mr. Rainbow, you want to follow that one? For those that don't know, Andrew Rainbow is the executive director of Grow Sarpy, used to be known as Sarpy County Economic Development. More for education for folks that may not be familiar. Um, if you're sitting down in Florida and you're trying to figure out where to move your business and you think of Omaha, at that point Omaha is just a big dot on the map. Um, from a regional perspective, that that dot is now eight counties, probably about thirty-five communities in two states. So Council Bluffs to Blair, uh, Plattsmouth is kind of the big bubble. And we've got a partnership ran out of the Omaha Chamber that works on that site selection and recruitment just to get people into that bubble. And then once they're up here and we start understanding maybe what county they probably best fit. Um, each county has an economic development corporation and Andrew Rainbow is the executive director of Sarpy's that we're a member of, and he's here to give us quarterly report.
Thank you very much. It's always a great introduction and I always, uh, uh, sitting there watching those oaths and thinking, great, now I gotta go. Uh, all right, uh, so I apologize. I thought I thought we'd send you a digital copy of of our report for you. Um, but okay, this, okay, so you guys are having your packet. Okay, great. Well, apologize to those in attendance, but uh, I we've got two items there. I I think one is all of our economic indicators that we typically go through on our quarterly presentation. I'm not going to go through those all tonight, uh, but please take a look at it. Uh, suffice to say, Sarpy County had a fantastic year from all indicators, uh, and Papillion in particular had another great year. So, uh, if you have any questions of those, I'll be happy to answer, but, uh, tonight is what we're calling our a return on investment report. So, uh, really focusing on what, uh, Grow Sarpy did to help grow Sarpy County and, uh, and in particular Papillion. So the numbers I'm going to go through tonight are are specific to your jurisdiction. Excuse me, I'll start. As we typically do with with landed projects, we landed six total projects this year. Four of those were in Papillion's jurisdiction. Uh, one would be the Google expansion, uh, warehouse for Home Depot, uh, the fourth R and R building at their current park. And then another, uh, smaller project called Guardian Bansaw. Uh, Google makes up, uh, the bulk of our our investment, and they announced, uh, another five hundred million dollars spend on on their, uh, campus there. So out of the five hundred and seventeen million dollars, uh, that's a lot of that capital investment. Uh, the Home Depot warehouse is a smaller warehouse. When you hear Home Depot, it's it's actually about fifty thousand square foot. Part of a building that was built out on Valley Ridge Road just off the interstate, uh, in the, uh, I I A D Logistics Hub New Park. Uh, and then R and R, of course, is off of Gold Coast and and one hundred and fifty. They built their fourth, uh, spec building there and and that, uh, campus. We continue to work with them. And then Guardian Bansaw makes, uh, they make saws for bandsaws, obviously for, uh, food production industry. So, uh, you know, with the growing, uh, demand for for protein and and Omaha being a hub for that, uh, they wanted to have a presence in the market. They're actually a company based out of New Zealand, and so they're opening up small kind of, uh, warehouse, sales office, uh, and that they can hopefully grow from there. This is the kind of hopefully a first phase in their growth in our area. But again, as you say, I mentioned a little over half a billion dollars in investment and one hundred and thirty-five new jobs. Uh, and, uh, overall, we got eight hundred and twenty jobs for for Sarpy in Sarpy County. Uh, the bulk of those came from a project that landed, uh, just north on one hundred and forty-four Street, uh, in 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 La Vista's territory in the Chauk Business Park. But, um, we had one hundred and thirty-five new announced jobs. There weren't any new jobs announced with the Google expansion, but, uh, we know that they continue to hire. And so we believe that's an undercount. I also believe that the, so the next one, the next part is is an undercount too, I think, but some numbers we got, some numbers we're going with. Uh, we wanted to take a look at what the projects and opportunities that that we put Papillion in front of. Uh, and we had a total of of thirty-five new-to-market projects and our, when we ran ran through our software, it said we we submitted, uh, eight Papillion, eight projects for Papillion. Again, I I think that's wrong, but it's what, uh, we didn't have time to go back and and double check everything that came out. Because we really had a lot of, when we when we submit projects, the R and R park is one of the ones that we submit most along with, uh, the Steel Ridge project that, uh, that's right, right along that Shram Road corridor. So those are some of our most submitted projects, and I'm not sure if there was some kind of glitch. It says we submitted one, uh, for each one there. Uh, but, uh, you can see we had, it says we got eight total projects and thirteen sites, site submissions. Uh, but what, really, I wanted to give you an idea of of what sites that we are, we're submitting for projects. Uh, we're, as a whole, I've been kind of going around telling everybody, we're very short on large sites that can land large projects. Uh, but we're, we've got a a growing amount, um, but it's also being, uh, rendered out pretty quickly, a growing amount of spec space that we're seeing. So we're seeing a an increase of of, uh, of folks like R and R, uh, that are coming to our area and wanting to build more spec space. So I think in the in the years until we open up some more ground, so in the next year or two, uh, we're going to continue to see smaller projects that are going to flex warehouse buildings that are are being built on a spec basis. So, which is great because it's a it's a product we never had before. And when those people came to market before, we'd say, hey, we could build you a building and in a year and a half from now, you might be able to get into it. Now they're able to just come and sign a lease and get get going, which is which is great for us. And then so, uh, then we just kind of ran through some of the meetings and things that we've we've done in, uh, in the specific to Papillion. So had a lot of site development meetings, obviously, uh, on Highway fifty corridor, Shram Cape Heart there, uh, investor relations, speaking engagements, and other community interactions. So just trying to give you an idea of the things that we're doing specific to Papillion, uh, under the under the Sarpy umbrella. Uh, one other, a couple of notes. Uh, you see in the stats that we gave you, we're down to like a one percent unemployment in Sarpy County, which is hard to believe, but obviously we're part of a greater, uh, a larger labor market. So, uh, we've got other folks that we can pull from, but, uh, I would, I would, the numbers are saying that just about every able, whoops, every able-bodied person in the county that wants to have a job seems to have one right now. Uh, and then two, just a quick note about, uh, we had our annual meeting last week, uh, and, uh, we honored a couple of couple of folks. One was Oxbow Animal Health, which is, uh, we honor them for kind of being a pioneer out on that Shram Road corridor. Uh, they've, uh, they haven't been there too long. I think two thousand fifteen, I think, is when they made the plan to move out there. Uh, but they've got a, uh, they've grown their workforce by fifty percent since moving from, um, from Cass County. And they've just got a beautiful building and really kind of set the tone for that area. So we want to give them, um, give them their their due. And then also, uh, Sarah Hanson is a workforce development, uh, I guess, uh, specialist for Turner Construction that's building, uh, Facebook projects. And it's kind of weird to have a a construction company that has a workforce development specialist, but, uh, that's kind of the nature of our labor market right now. And, uh, and she's been a great help for us. She was a volunteer leader in our effort to, uh, expand, uh, I guess, the the awareness of construction and skilled trades opportunities to to young kids in Sarpy County. So this year we gave out about a thousand, uh, construction safety kits to kids in fifth through, I think, eighth grade. Uh, and she was really kind of spearheaded that for us as well as a lot of other projects. So we wanted to give her her due and 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 honor her for her help and helping grow our labor force, which we, uh, desperately need right now. So, uh, with that, uh, I'll let you guys ask me questions if you if you do have any.
Anybody have any questions? We really appreciate the partnership, Andrew.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Powers, administrator's report, please.
Thank you. Um, I do want to give a thank you to the fifty-five-plus club and the La Vista Senior Center and the Papillion Recreation Staff. Tracy, your staff did a great job yesterday at the, uh, Valentine's Luncheon, a great community event where we partner with La Vista. Um, and thank you to city staff, Mayor Black, Councilmember Ingberg, um, and everyone that helped volunteer to make that such a great event. And also, it was great seeing Tori again. The Blues Agent Band was there performing and and rocked the house. So thank you. Uh, it's a great community event. And also a thank you to Tony Gowan for putting together a grant with the Nebraska Game Game and Parks Commission. Uh, the city was awarded a four hundred thousand dollar land and water conservation fund grant for the purchase of land for natural play area, uh, near Ninety-sixth and Lincoln. And also congrats to Matt Kowar's team. Uh, they were awarded a grant for the hiring of an intern at the library. Uh, this program is a great opportunity, uh, for students to get involved in library work. So thank you. And then just a couple of reminders of upcoming committee meetings. Uh, we do have an audit ad hoc committee meeting on March first. And then we'll have a public safety committee meeting to continue the review of the property maintenance code sometime early to mid-March. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Do you have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg, eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Ordinance for first reading, item D one, ordinance nineteen fifty-nine. An ordinance to approve a request for a change of zone from A G Agricultural to L I Limited Industrial and G I General Industrial for the property, property, property legally described as attractive land located in the west half of the northwest quarter, section two, township thirteen, north range eleven east of the six PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southeast corner of a hundred and south one hundred and fifty-sixth and Shram Road, the applicant's R and R Realty Group for R and R Commerce Park South. Is there a councilwoman to introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item D two, ordinance nineteen sixty, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, section one seventeen dash eleven, to increase the number of fireworks sales licenses to fourteen for twenty twenty-two only and to provide for an effective date. Is there a councilwoman to introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Kluk?
Yes. Is there any way we can, uh, waive the second and third on this and just vote on this tonight? Because to me, to let this go six weeks for something that we know is going to happen, it's not affecting anybody but the four people that put in for this. I say we make a mo, and I'll make the motion to waive second and third readings. I know that's not favorable to do here, but in this situation, I think it is, so.
So if there's a motion, then we'll get, well, I guess I'll ask for a second first. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Um, a motion and a second does take a super majority of the council and to waive second and third. Any warnings, Mr. Thielen, since we don't do them a ton?
Well, uh, one one warning here might be that if we do waive second and third reading now, in effect, we would not be having any public hearing on the matter.
Which was not, which was not publicized.
Yeah, we haven't publicized a public hearing.
We'll open it here, but only the people here would know about it.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that would deprive the public of the right to anticipate a public hearing and participate in a public hearing.
So with that comment, it doesn't prevent the waiver of the second and third's consideration as people are voting?
No.
No, it doesn't prevent?
Does not prevent.
Okay, all right. So any council discussion? Mr. Mungard.
Uh, Mr. Dorski, I I tend to agree with you that there's no reason to have the three readings, but I would, I'm going to vote against yours simply because I would prefer that we go ahead and do the first reading tonight, have the second reading, a public hearing, and then waive the third reading. Um, just because I understand there are people out there who do not like fireworks sales. Uh, we don't hear from them, but nonetheless, we should not cut off the opportunity for people who don't like fireworks sales or even a competitor who thinks that, uh, we should limit the number of sale of sales locations. Um, I think it is important to go through the public hearing, even if nobody shows up. So I'm going to vote against this for tonight for that reason.
Ms. Kluk.
Thank you. I'm going to support this. We've gone through this, um, once. We've had public comment when we approved the first ten licenses. No one came and spoke at that time, so I do not see a reason to delay this. I also believe that we are affecting not-for-profits, and most of these are youth-related not-for-profits. And I think we need to move forward with this to give them the ample time that we can or the last few weeks that we can to make their plans to be ready to move forward. So I am fully going to support this.
Any other council discussion? Please vote. A yes vote would be to waive second and third, and then we'll go right to, uh, the vote. And a no vote then would, uh, just hold it for the next meeting for the public hearing. Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg. Six A's, two N's by Councilman Mungard and Councilman Gaines.
Six eight is the super majority, so motion to waive passes. So we are on to the motion. So is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen sixty, uh, minister, uh, an, um, ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, section seventeen eleven to increase the number of fireworks sales licenses to fourteen for twenty twenty-two only and to provide for an effective date? Motion by Councilman, Councilman Ing, Jorski, second by Councilman Kluk. Um, do we have any proponents or opponents? Seen none. Any council discussion? Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. And if you'd state your name for the record. Sorry about that.
Sorry. I'm Joe Willough, president of the Titan Band Boosters. This is our largest fundraiser for the year and it supports Papillion students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? If you'd state your name for the record.
Edward Wanniger. I just wanted to point out that there was quite a crowd here at the last, whatever the last time it was, it came up for, uh, the fireworks around discussion. So it seems like those people would want to have some input and sound off on us, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any others? Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg, eight A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Next is D three, ordinance nineteen sixty-one. An ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, section thirty-five twenty-six, to update and clarify rules on use of public, city public funds and to provide for an effective date. Is there a councilwoman to introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. F one, resolution R twenty-two zero zero one five, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to prove an amendment to the future land use map for the areas within the city of Papillion zoning jurisdiction and future growth areas. The applicant is the city of Papillion. It's the future land use map amendment. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? And Mr., um, Sturzma will speak on behalf of the city. It's it's an unusual thing we don't handle very often, so I wanted him to give an opportunity to present to the council on behalf of the city. Mr. Sturzma.
Mark Sturzma, planning director. Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, this is a request to to do an, uh, an overall update of the future land use map. And I know you know what those are, but for the sake of everybody here, the the future land use map is a component of the comprehensive plan. And it lays out expected, uh, patterns of development. It endeavors to create patterns of development that are compatible and can be supported by existing or, um, future infrastructure. The, it's important to note that that these plans, um, are expected to evolve. They they can be amended over time. And we don't have a perfect prediction of the future. So so, um, this is what we think is a is a an appropriate pattern of development. But as you know, um, you can expect to see, um, changes as market changes over time and as development requests come in. Um, if you recall, there has been significant, uh, public process on this. Uh, we held a charrette at the Field House. I think that was a three-day charrette. There was, uh, an open house at City Hall. We had a joint planning commission and city council meeting. And then there was a public hearing at, uh, the last planning commission meeting where, uh, they gave a unanimous recommendation for approval. Uh, the major components of of this plan, um, and I'll I'll try to keep it brief, but the, uh, if you compare this to our existing future land use map, uh, the map has now been expanded to include our entire growth area. Um, now that we have boundary agreements with all of, uh, the other cities in Sarpy County, we we have, uh, a clear understanding of what our growth area is. And so we've planned out within that entire area. The other thing that's important about this map is we've taken all of the previous map amendments and sub-area plans that have been adopted and merged them into this map. And so now for someone to to, um, reference the the future land use map, they can look at one document versus the map plus the twenty or so amendments, uh, that we have right now. Uh, the other major, um, element of this updated map is, um, with expected sewer service south of the ridgeline and and now expanding into the the future growth area. Um, we have a lot of, um, land to the south, and we've looked at how that road network will work. And we've incorporated a ridgeline boulevard and then also, um, uh, major, um, parkways along the drainage ways, which in this plan, um, identify those those major drainage ways as either parkland or open space. And then the last thing that I'll point out, um, that's really important in this plan is the Cape Heart Road Corridor. Um, it's intended to be a major, um, future corridor, um, within Papillion and throughout the county. Cape Heart. Um, if you think about Cape Heart, it extends to the east all the way into Bellevue, um, and is a major connection to Offutt Air Force Base. And at the western end, it it ties into all the emerging industrial development along Highway fifty, near Interstate eighty. And eventually it will have, um, there'll be a future interchange at I eighty. And so that corridor across, uh, Papillion and in in fact, across the county is really important. Um, major employment at either end. We look at having mixed-use nodes at the major intersections. And, um, um, in the the plan itself, we we talk about it eventually being a multimodal, uh, corridor. Um, so those are the the major components of the plan. Um, in terms of the the status of this, um, you you may not have seen this particular version before. We took the the pretty map that our consultant had prepared that it's been presented to you in the past. We converted it to GIS, and that does a few things. One, it lets us put it onto the Sarpy GIS system so that it's very easily accessible, uh, to everybody. Um, it also makes it much easier for us to amend it over time because we can amend the map itself, um, um, with our own staff versus having a a separate amendment that you have to cross-reference as we use the map. And then the the other thing that we've done is we've made it, um, compatible so that when we're working with our consultant, they use some new land use categories. And, um, while those were 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 perfectly appropriate, what we did is when we prepared this map, we we use the same land use categories that are in our current map. And that makes this map compatible with our current comprehensive plan, uh, and all of the other planning efforts that that we've done to date. Um, just a quick update on the status of the the comprehensive plan update overall. Um, you know, as you know, we were working with a consultant. They had some issues. We're working with the second consultant. They really helped us get to this point. And now we're we're really in-house working on the narrative of that plan. We hope to bring that to you, uh, in the next few months. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
I think the only other thing I would add, and then if you comment if I'm if I'm wrong or you got anything to add to it. Um, in the last year, we've made a lot of decisions, big decisions on, um, sewer, uh, South Sarpy Sewer. And then the agency has been, um, working on right-of-way acquisition. Uh, the sewer agency has been very conscious in the right-of-way acquisition to, um, get the right-of-way in the same profile area that the new Plattview Road corridor would be. So those projects work together, um, and and enable each other. Um, we have Marx actively involved in in a study related to the I eighty interchange, um, that fits into this. Um, and then, um, so we got, and then, um, so we got sewer, we got Plattview Road, and we got the I eighty corridor that all converge into this area. And, um, I don't know if there's anything specific that about this map other than a lot of the things you've been involved with the last two years all kind of converge in here. And, um, no changes to this map that compete against everything you've approved. It actually just documents, uh, what you've been approving and gives a clear picture of it. Anything to add to that?
Well, yeah, thank you, Mayor. The, uh, the one thing I would add is that, you know, with all of the development applications that we've been processing, um, both in recent history and and are reviewing right now, we've gotten to the point that we've outgrown our current future land use map. And so essentially, a lot of the the new development new development, almost, almost by definition, has to go through a comprehensive plan amendment process as part of their entitlement process, um, because they've out, you know, we're out ahead of our plan. Um, with this, um, with approval of this map, we actually have some development applications right now that will be able to drop their requested amendment to the comprehensive plan because they've been incorporated into this map.
And all the work we did with OPBD's incorporated into the plan as well. So, any questions, Mark? Mr. Stube?
Mark, you already kinda alluded to this, but I, I think it would be important if maybe you could kinda point it out on the map. So one thing would be is that we see a light, a lot of white area, which I kind of already know what the, what the, uh, answer would be, but, but those are essentially the boundaries between the communities that we have agreements with. So if you could point that out. The other thing would be is that with the, the Platby Road Corridor that's gonna go from essentially to the east off of the highway all the way west to tie into the interstate, if you can kinda give us an idea where that corridor is and show how much of that property is, is, is gonna be within the Papillion area versus how much is gonna be in the other jurisdictions.
Yeah, I should've brought a laser pointer. Uh, if you can hear me okay. So the white areas are other jurisdictions.
Hey, Mark, can you take the microphone with you? That way it's being recorded as well, so people can, later on, people can hear it.
Try not to make any terrible noises in the process. Is that, is that so work? So, so the colored areas would be our current jurisdiction, our future jurisdiction based on our boundary agreements. Uh, our ETJ, our territorial jurisdiction, which is two miles from the city limits, you know, it, it generally runs about to, to this area. So all of this isn't within our, our jurisdiction yet, but again, based on those boundary agreements, we know that someday it will be. Um, and then also, you, you can see that, that angle on the, the western edge, that's Interstate eighty. Again, that's our boundary agreement with the city of Greddon. Uh, in terms of, I mentioned the Cape Heart Road Corridor, um, and it would be this corridor. You see the mixed-use nodes at the major intersections. You see a future business park. You see all the industrial development. And then if you were to take that road further east, you know, through Bellevue, that would, that would get you off the Air Force Base. I believe the Platby Road Corridor is here. Again, you see, um, one mixed-use node in that corridor. Um, we do, um, honor the, the cross-county areas within the Serpik County planning numbers. Um, and that extends, it'll eventually tie in through this area. So not a lot of that within our jurisdiction, uh, but, but it is, um, consistent with the county planning.
That, it is in our jurisdiction as you get off the, uh, I eighty, the new I eighty interchange, if that's where we think it's gonna be. That gr, that shaded tan box that kinda drops, that square that's kind of all by itself, it goes through there. So it'll come through the business park, dip down there, the green box at the bottom right of that is the, um, is the Springfield, um, landfill where we worked with that OPBD substation. So that goes right along there. And then you enter back into the Springfield jurisdiction, and then when you hit the yellow, you come back into ours. Yeah.
And one thing to notice is that, uh, we have some residential in this area. Um, working with HCR, they've done industrial, um, development all over the country, and they really stress that, um, for that area west of Highway fifty. Um, they've seen this state in multiple cities across the country where industrial development is rolling, um, you end up building out, um, that type of development. But if you don't reserve some areas for residential, then you're forcing all of the, the people who work in those areas to commute in. And so they just, they, they really stress that we wanna do good planning here. We have to incorporate some residential areas in close proximity to our, our major, um, industrial and office park areas. So, so that's what that, that, uh, tan color in this area is.
Any other questions? Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-two zero zero one five? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilwoman Klug. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Eight eight zero nays.
Motion passes. That was a couple of years' worth of work, so thank you very much, Mark, for that. Item F two, Resolution R twenty-two zero zero one nine, a resolution to approve consultant services agreement with the City of La Vista and Brian Smiles for MPDES MS four discharge permit, stormwater, public education, and outreach. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-two zero zero one nine? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Eight eight zero nays.
Motion passes. F three, Resolution R twenty-two zero zero two one, a resolution to approve a bill of sale transferring police service dog Knox from the City of Papillion to the City of Lincoln. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-two zero zero two one? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Eight eight zero nays.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. Committee, yes, sir. Mr. Mumgarth?
Uh, before we go on, I now have a question about the fireworks ordinance that we modified. Okay, we increased the number to fourteen, but we still have not yet approved.
Oh, yeah.
Those additional four. Can we do that tonight, or do we need to wait till next meeting?
We didn't publish it as an agenda item, so my guess is gonna be we can't. But Mr. Thielen?
That's correct. We cannot.
Okay. But we can do it next one.
So we come back for the second reading. Second, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I think the only committee that met was golf ad hoc. I understand Mr. Stube's the chair. Congrats. Wanna give an update?
So, um, the ad hoc committee met tonight, and it's made up of council members, Sunday, Mumgarth, Jaworski, and myself. Um, a number of things that we discussed, but two of the biggest items we discussed was, one would be, uh, a, a budget amendment to address some pretty major, uh, capital expenditures that, uh, we're gonna enter, enter into. And so one would be, uh, golf carts at Tera. We need to get them ordered now in order for them to be available in twenty twenty-three. Um, also, we're gonna do some expenditures for golf, uh, paths at Tera. We've also got some cause for fertilizer spreader, uh, bunker rig, and, uh, irrigation pump structure at, uh, at Eagle Hills. Uh, the other item that we discussed, uh, this evening was some changes to, uh, the golf, uh, fees. Uh, so that will be coming in front of the council in the near future. Thank you, Mayor.
Just quick clarification. When you say a budget amendment, that's just for the spending because it's within the amount we had already authorized in the budget. We just hadn't said. It, it is a true, uh, uh, dentum. Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any comments from the floor? Council comments. Ms. Klug?
Thank you. Just curious for clarification. We published the ordinance for the fireworks, and in it, it states that if we were doing the third reading, it would occur on March fifteenth. At that same meeting, it is expected that the council will consider the remaining four applications for possible approval. So it has been published in this ordinance that we were going to approve it at our third reading. We chose to have the third reading tonight, so doesn't that mean by wording on this ordinance in the background, we could consider those tonight?
A look to the referee, Mr. Thielen.
No, I don't think so. There, there's more formalities involved in publishing a notice of an agenda item. Um, it hasn't been published as an agenda item. Just the mere appearance of it on a staff report isn't enough under state law to, um, make it an, an official notice of, of an agenda item. And we can't amend an agenda, we can't amend an agenda, um, less than twenty-four hours before the, the meeting. So that's what we're stuck with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? Just a couple of things from last couple of weeks. Uh, Andrew Rainbow mentioned we had the annual meeting, uh, of growth Serpik. Uh, Papillion had a, a good showing there, so thanks, everybody, for that, 'cause I think, uh, probably seventy-five percent of what they talked about was Papillion, um, economic development. So thank you for everybody there. Um, Ms. Powers also mentioned the Valentine's Dinner. The entire community gym was full. Mr. Ingberg, I don't know, a couple hundred, well, a couple hundred people there? And, uh, she said it was rocking. No wonder the old people have hearing aids. Um, there was rock and roll. Um, the, um, had a couple, had a meeting today, starting to talk about the Platby Road Corridor. Mr. Sturzma had the map up that we just approved. Uh, but even though that's approved, we're already starting to think about if that interstate interchange goes in, um, what should Platby Road Corridor look like? So even though we have it identified on there, we're gonna now dive into that even a little bit deeper now that the sewer's getting in down there. We expect development might start picking up down there, so we're gonna be revisiting that. Um, that'll be a long process. And then I'm gonna be speaking Thursday night. Leadership Nebraska, which is a group under the Nebraska Chamber, um, they've got about twenty-six people that are in a class all year long, and they travel to different parts of the state just to learn what's going on. Um, so the urban people can get out into the sand hills and learn, and the rural people can get into the metro area. And, uh, they specifically wanted to know what was going on in Serpik County and Papillion. Um, so there's statewide interest on what we're doing here, so I'm gonna be speaking to them Thursday night. And I think that's most of the other updates. Just to re, begin a reminder, the Audit Ad Hoc Committee on the March first, and then the regular city council meeting. Any other council comments? Mr. Sunday?
It's been brought to my attention that this man in the maroon shirt might've wanted to say something.
Thank you for that reminder. Yes, sir. Welcome. And if you'd state your name and address for the record. Thanks for that reminder, because I knew he was here, too.
Uh, John Adams, one-one-two-one, Michelle Parkway in Papillion. Twenty-seven years. If I make it another fifteen, God willing, I'll be like a real old-time resident by then. Uh, I am a Serpik County liaison for an organization, all-volunteer organization called Honoring Remember, the Nebraska Chapter. And I am here tonight to ask considerations that, uh, Papillion fly, uh, will fly or display the Honoring Remember flag. I'd like to show you a generic... When we present these to families, and we've presented two-hundred-and-fifteen of them, uh, the name of their fallen hero, the rank, the date, and the place where they made the ultimate sacrifice is in the white border where Honoring Remember is. Um, we have another fifteen in the works that we will present this year. Um, we have presented flags in multiple places, um, homes, public venues. We presented three at the Lamb of God Lutheran Church here in Papillion, Naziska Semper, and Dustin Workman, who was a Serpik County resident. And I, as I said, we're an all-volunteer organization. What sets us apart from other groups that you may hear from someday is I gave you all a handout with my card on it. And we have a legislative resolution that was adopted by the State of Nebraska. And for the record, I would like to read part one of it. That the Honoring Remember flag is hereby adopted as an official symbol of the State of Nebraska, representing the state's commitment to honoring and remembering the lives of all members of the Armed Forces of the United States who have lost their lives while serving or as a result of their service. That, uh, is very important. Uh, we, this group understands the sacred nature of how we honor our fallen. If you've ever looked into the eyes of a mother, father, brother, sister, aunt, uncle, grandpa, grandma, you understand. And the, the time of death doesn't matter. We presented flags clear from World War One to current war on terror. Uh, we presented a flag not that long ago to a Vietnam Veterans family, and he was very emotional about it. And that's been, what, fifty years? But it's never forgotten. That, that person gave his life, his family never forgets, and we shouldn't either. And it's very important. We spent a lot of time and effort to get this passed in a legislation, get a resolution. Uh, three of our members are Gold Star Mothers, and they testified at all the hearings. So we're respectfully asking that you consider displaying the flag, flying the flag for those fallen. I included my card with my name, address, phone number, email address. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, I'd be more than happy to answer those. Just contact me anytime. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and we'll, we'll get a conversation going with Mr. Gowin, the Parks Director. Uh, good update for council and the public. Um, the la, the current budget that was approved did have some community veteran dollars set aside for Veterans Park, and Mr. Gowin's been working on that next enhancement. And actually, the, the timing is good of, of him coming up and speaking. It's a POW, MIA, KIA, uh, memorial, uh, portion at Veterans Park. And so there will be a specific honoring of the killed in action. And we're making an application through the, uh, Nebraska Garden Club to have that area designated as an official Gold Star Memorial, along with the Blue Star Memorial programs. And if that get, if we get approved for that, um, was talking to Mr. Gowin about the ability to maybe have the flag. We have been very protective of that area and not letting anything other than official flags fly because we get a lot of requests for flags. Um, but thank you for the clarification that the State of Nebraska Legislature has adopted this as an official flag. Um, so we'll work together to incorporate, um, your request. Mr. Gowin, it's probably a crapshoot to say when we can open that, um, because of all the supply chain issues that everybody's having. But if everything comes together, I would tell people to pencil in Memorial Day, um, for maybe a dedication. Would that be right?
Correct. And we were approved of Gold Star Memorial.
Oh, we were approved. Thank you very much. So that will be an official Gold Star Memorial, and that's a national program, so it'll fit very, very well. So pencil in mark, pencil in Memorial Day for potential dedication and raising of the Honoring Remember flag. So thank you for coming out. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Sunday. Any other comments? Yes?
I had a, a voter recently asked me a question. I didn't know the answer to, but, um, a couple of years ago, as everybody knows, Mayor Black declared a, a health emergency with the COVID. And the question posed to me was, has that ever been rescinded? And, and I honestly don't remember that it was. Has it been?
I looked at Mr. Thielen. I thought it had an expiration on it, or it ceased with the governors, I think, but good question.
I don't think we've ever taken any, uh, action to rescind it, and I can't remember if there's a sunset on it or not.
We'll look into it.
There may be some reasons to keep it in place. We'll have to look at that.
Okay. We'll, we'll investigate that. Good question. Thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Eight eight zero nays.
We are adjourned.